Good morning, Christine.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Excellent.
Cable's ready, Christine, we can start.
Okay. Um, so, good morning. Today is Tuesday, June 16, 2020. The City of Boston Zoning Board of Appeal Business Meeting is now in session. In accordance with the applicable provision of the Open Meeting Law, this meeting is being livestreamed. It has been called pursuant to an executive order of Mayor Martin J. Walsh issued on February 24, 2020, titled "An Executive Order Relative to the Zoning Board of Appeal." Mayor Walsh's executive order recognizes the critical role that the Board of Appeal plays in approving development projects throughout the city. With this in mind, the order seeks to ensure that the Board maintains the highest ethical standards in order to avoid apparent or potential conflicts of interest, and does so in a manner which supports transparency and public confidence in the Board. One aspect of accomplishing the initiative of the executive order, it's the holding of this business meeting for the Board, or consider the creation of any written policies or protocols which, in the judgment of the Board, facilitate the efficient, predictable conduct of its proceedings and decision-making, unquote. The Board has therefore drafted proposed policies and procedures which will serve as the basis of discussion at today's meeting. The drafted policies and procedures encapsulate the current Board procedures and practices as they have been shaped over many years. The discussion aims to clarify, improve, and/or alter the current procedure and practices of the Board when necessary to achieve the goals of the executive order. This discussion will help shape a final document of the Board's policies and procedures, which will ultimately be adopted by both of the Board. Any policies and procedures adopted by this Board will then be filed with the City Clerk and be made available to the public. We will now commence with the discussion. Just for the record, I need to make sure that everybody identifies themselves, please. All Board members? Mark your own.
Mark Erlich.
Mark Plowton.
Aaron Kendo.
Joe Rogera.
Ed Devoe.
Okay, and is that everybody we've expected for the meeting? Are we missing, um, Carrie?
Carrie's unavailable today, Christine.
Okay. Okay, so, we have a quorum of the Board. I just want to see, um, and plus, let me start off by thanking the staff for the draft, draft work that you put into this document. Um, if anybody has a chance, and whatever, what I thought I would do was start up with some conceptual thoughts, and then move section by section through the document. Does that make sense?
That's a great idea.
Okay. So, conceptually, I thought, Kevin, that you did a great job, you know, putting all the legislation, that sort of the enabling legislation into the document. My first thought was to move that as an appendix to the document, as well as the Mayor Walsh's ethics requirements also to the appendix. And we should put a note on that to say, as amended, because we want to make sure that this document is as live for as long as possible in the event there should be some changes popping up in the near future. Okay?
Yes, I think that's a great idea. I think that is something that we considered as part of the final document, is that there will probably be a number of appendices that we will ultimately refer to throughout the document. So I think that's a great idea.
Okay. And then what I'd like to do too is, in the preamble, identify upfront all the appropriate city agencies that are involved in the process. You know, clearly acknowledging that the staff to the Board of Appeal are ISD staff people, that the BPDA has an advisory role to the Board, community people have an advisory role to the Board. So make it clear that everything is advisory to the Board, okay? Because I want to make sure that when we talk about testimony, that that comes across clearly. Okay? Also, in the past, these notices have been circulated to the Assessing Department, where at one particular meeting, we recouped over $100,000 in back taxes. So I think that is also something we should consider. Okay? And then the other, I also want to raise is overall, is that this, this document should reflect other portions of Mayor Walsh's executive order of February 24th, because there are pieces that talk about an online application within 180 days of this order. And this is in reference to Article 2, Section 2A. Okay? And also 2B, because it talks about language and communications access within 45 days. So I think that needs to be included if we're going to be talking about, about, you know, a more robust community process.
Great, we can certainly include that.
Okay. Any, any other overall comments that people have? Okay, so let's go through the document, so that we will have a revised introduction, a composition of the Board. The ethical requirements will all go into the appendix, okay? And of course, we will recognize in, the requirements of the executive order, which is the trigger for this document.
Christine, Christine, can I, just one, one comment about the section on the composition of the Board? Just wondering if there is a reason why the statutory obligations to appoint Board members? It, you know, talks about the mayoral appointment with approval of the City Council, but it's also under the Enabling Statute that there are certain constituencies that are supposed to be represented. And I, I, you know, I'm aware that there is discussion about whether that should change or stay the same or whatever, but it seems to me that it ought to be referenced in the document, or is there a reason not to?
Will it be referenced? It could be referenced in the document as an appendix if we pull out completely, rather than try to pull out completely the elements of the zoning code, of that, of that particular section referring to the Board of Appeal.
Is there something I can add? And just try to briefly encapsulate what is stated in the Enabling Act with respect to where the appointments come from. I can add that into this section on composition of the Board.
I'm with Mark. I think that's very important to have in this document somewhere along the line, is that there was a rhyme or reason in what the, for everyone's selection to the Board, and what constituencies are represented.
So can you, Kevin, copy and paste from the zoning that particular piece of it into the appendix? In its entirety, so that there's, it's there in the, in the fullness of the, of the, of the requirement?
Yes, we can, we can put a copy of the, I think we talked about putting a copy of the entire Enabling Act in the appendix. So I expect that that will be part of the filed document.
Okay.
I, I think, I think, I think that would be good, because I know that that was certainly one of the many issues that was discussed in the, in the, in the rollout to this document. And it'd be good, I think, to have it incorporated. So Kevin's suggestion, I think, makes sense.
So I think it makes sense, and I can add, like I say, you know, kind of a brief description of it here in this section. And we can also refer to the full text as being appended to the document. I, I think that's a good way to do it for a lot of these things, is to kind of have them set out, and then refer to the full text set out in the appendices, whether it's for the Enabling Act or for the Ethics Requirements of Chapter 268A. I think that's ultimately what a lot of this, these items in here are going to look like.
Agreed.
And going to page eight, page nine, about ethics, we should make a stronger referral to state ethics, because I know in the past, they've been interested in our, in us. And we've, we've, as members, periodically relied on them for their advice.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Christine?
Yes, if we could make a stronger reference to state ethics, because I know they've been interested in how we've been working. I know the Board members have reached out to them for advice about individual questions that they may have had.
Certainly, I can, I can incorporate some additional provisions, you know, from the Massachusetts General Laws. And again, I think we would append the text of MGL 268 to the document as well. So that it should, the text should be there in its entirety. And there can, I can look for whatever other advisories the state's website has on, or from the State Ethics Commission to include that might also be helpful.
Okay. And then going to Section D on page nine, training requirements for Board members and staff, I think that's excellent. Oh, oh, sorry, let me go back to Section C, number four. It requires annual, annual statements of financial interest. I think we should put something very precise about the Executive Secretary or whoever the appropriate person is going to contact us at, is it June, is it May, whatever it is, for the annual statement, so that it's documented that, that there is a clear, thoughtful process to that. And then, as an aside, in the past, we've also been required to do an annual certification of Bos-, City of Boston residency. And likewise, we should have that in there, that the Executive Secretary, and in his or her absence, whomever it is, will coordinate the requests and documentation of that. Okay?
Yes, I think those are all good suggestions, and we'll, you know, start to incorporate some more of that in, into this document. And some of that is going to be further vetted in conjunction with the Law Department in terms of the reporting requirements and training requirements that are referenced in the executive order.
Sure. And then we should also know on D, on training requirements, who's going to do the training and within X number of days of reappointment? And likewise, who's going to train the Board staff?
Also something that we will have more detailed information on as we continue to work with the Law Department on, on that directive from the Mayor.
Thank you. And then on the procedure for appeal, that's where, for me, it's, because I think that this refers to the appeal being made in person. And that's when I thought we should actually refer to the Mayor's executive order, Article 2, Section 2, Section 2, whatever the appropriate pieces are, that in fact, it can be filed electronically, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes, and I agree. The intent there is also the same. Up until, you know, everything was shut down, the primary mode of filing the appeal was done in person. That is something that, since the stay-at-home order has, has been made, we've been accepting those applications by email, and we are also working towards having them to be strictly, or available online through the website. So that was an intended edit. But this was just a reflection of how things were up until the pandemic hit. But that is something that I expect will be updated in the document as well.
Thank you. And then the types of conditional, conditional exceptions, variances. Again, I think that is the test that is in the zoning code and should continue to be in the appendix. So I do think on page 13, there is a paragraph that says that, and is everybody on this page? On page 13, it says, "In determining its findings, the Board of Appeal shall take into account the number of persons residing, the character, and traffic conditions in the neighborhood." Is that the equity language that just got passed by the BPDA?
I'm looking at page 13, but that's Section 8 entitled "Decisions of the Board." What, can you give me the, the section that you're in?
I'm sorry, it's right above Section 7, "Hearings of the Board." It's that last paragraph.
Oh, under, under D, variances?
Yes, the last paragraph.
Numbers 1, 2, and 3?
Yes.
That, that is part of Article 7, Section 3 of the zoning code. So that is just a sub-paragraph to the other four criteria that are above it for A, B, C, and D.
Okay, so that can go into the appendix. And should we include anything on equity? Because I'm assuming the BPDA Board's process will need to work its way through the Zoning Commission, et cetera? I'm not up on, I'm not up on it.
I'm not sure I'm following.
Yeah, so we should just keep an eye on what's happening with the Board, the BPDA Board, and the Zoning Commission if there's, if they're going to add equity tests to the zoning code, okay? Does anybody have any other comments?
Yeah, a couple. All the language that's been drafted about conflict of interest and, is, I think, really good, and, you know, self-dealing and all of that stuff. What I don't see is a simple line, and there's a couple of places where it could be, in case a member has a specific, that most of the, most of the, most of the language around the self-dealing issues are, are sort of generic. And what does come up from time to time is a given case where someone has an involvement either directly or through a family member, and they inform the Chair that they're recusing themselves, and then leave the room. It seems to me that, that language reflecting that option should be incorporated into the document.
Yes, I had that as a note under voting slash quorum, but wherever is appropriate to talk about refusal.
Yeah, I, I believe- Yeah, I'll, I, I believe I had a provision for that in there and I agree. I think I might have accidentally removed it in formatting the document or something along those lines, but I will add that back in.
Okay. And then, and then the other thing is, um, and I don't know really how to, how to do this, but it seems to me that in general that we are gonna, that it, obviously the pandemic has, uh, has hastened the process, but in general, we're gonna be moving towards more electronic. Um, whether it's, uh, participation in, in the actual hearings, whether it's, uh, whether it's, uh, application, filing applications, whether it's reviewing, uh, the arc, the, the plans, that maybe there ought to be some section about just that the, the use of, uh, of, uh, electronic, uh, activity with respect to, um, all of these processes. I, you know, sort of as a generic overarching thing because I think that we don't want to lock ourselves into a situation where there are certain ways of doing things that are, that are in, in 2019 that are not going to be the way they are in 2021. Um, so
Yeah, that's exactly right. And I think that the mayor's, um, the mayor's, uh, executive order anticipated that. So there are a number of things that has to do with an ISD, um, to kind of help move things into an electronic, an electronic version.
Yeah, I would agree with that Christine. I think that i- is part of the executive order and I think some of those items have been given longer timeframes and those are things that are currently being, being, uh, worked on so that they can be, be implemented, um, as soon as possible. But we are trying to get to that point where there are more filings and, uh, documents accepted all online, um, so that we can eliminate a lot of extra steps that require, uh, in-person activity.
Hi. Any other comments?
Well, just again, one really minor thing. On page four, um, uh, I think it's Article Three, Section Eight, there's a reference to the, that commission. Um, does that, does that re- refer to the zoning commission?
Where are you looking again, Mark?
Uh, on, on page four, Article Three, Paragraph Eight, near the top of the page. Substantial value.
Oh, uh, that would be the Ethics Commission.
Okay, it doesn't say that. And so it, there's a bunch of references in that paragraph to the commission, but the first time it ought to say the Ethics Commission.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so let's go into, um, more detail on the hearings of the board. Any questions, comments on the section that, uh, refers to public hearings? Or, um, time for scheduling hearings? Um, the only comment I have on the time that I, um, would like to make sure that we aren't over-promising ourselves because sometimes, especially given, um, more, um, Zoom meetings, et cetera, et cetera, these forty-five to ninety days may be ambitious. So I, I like to leave it open because I think if the, the, the lead sentence on that paragraph, uh, kind of encapsulates all of it.
Sure. Uh, I think that the, yeah, the language in the Enabling Act doesn't set a specific time. Uh, there is no, um, numerical, uh, requirement. It's just within a reasonable time. Uh, forty-five to ninety days is just a general, um, gauge of past practice, I think. But you're right, in these current times, uh, there's a lot more uncertainty with that. So, um, we can look at revising that as well.
Yes, because then maybe that'll, will, uh, reduce the number of deferrals that we see too. Um, anything else on the community process? Section C in that, um, section, um, five, section seven C, anything on community process? Anything on, uh, notice? And again, notice talks about, um, notice will be sent by mail, postage prepaid. Is that going to continue to occur? Or is it going to be a dual outreach, also electronic outreach?
That will, uh, continue to, that, that is express language from the Enabling Act. That controls those notice requirements. So we will continue to do that, the notice within, in accordance with the Enabling Act. Um, to the extent that anybody, uh, requests that they be notified of a hearing on an appeal by email, that is something that's added to the file and, um, something that staff handles, uh, if that is specifically requested. Um, but that is, what is in there is, is what is dictated by the Enabling Act.
So we can have again that in the, in the appendix and then talk and say that the Enabling Act was adopted in sixty-four, um, and recognizing recent events or whatever so that it, that gives us the dual, the dual possibilities. Okay, how about E, representation? F, absent of appelle-, of appel-, appellant or agent slash attorney? Any problem with that? How about order of business? I ha-, I just had a comment on F because, um, the, I'm, I'm hoping that eventually Gcod gets taken out of the code because it's just an administrative function. It's not, you know, so I, I just, um, you know, if this is gonna have a longer shelf life, that's my only question about that. Um, and also K, K, request for reconsideration. I'd like to, um, knock that off because, um, we've had some arbitrary requests for reconsideration of our decision. Um, and I'd like to make sure that once we make a decision, um, community and everybody else who's listened to the hearing has the confidence to know that there will be no reconsideration of the decision in any way. Cause if it should come in, maybe it should come in as, um, call of the chair or a board final arbiter or something like that.
Okay, yes. Uh, so with respect to your comments on Gcod, I, I agree. Um, unfortunately, for the time being, it's, still requires a conditional use permit. So until there is a, a zoning amendment that's adopted by the zoning commission, um, well, those will have to be scheduled, but I, I understand the sentiment and I agree with that. Um, and with respect to the request for reconsideration, I think maybe that, um, might require some more research to determine. Uh, it, it is, you know, part of the code, the zoning code. So I don't know, um, we'd have to look into it more, I think, to see whether or not, um, we can remove that, you know, or how we can approach those types of requests going forward, um, versus how it's done in the past. So I think that's an issue that might, uh, take some more research. Um, however, just one thing I will point out is that even though, um, you know, we're going through all these things, for example, if there was a zoning code amendment that, um, no longer required a conditional use permit for Gcod, uh, then we would look to amend, uh, the adopted policies and procedures and we would have to make those such, uh, amendments as, you know, any new legislation would require. And that would go for anything else in the document as well, whether it's ethics legislation or something, something else. Um, so we, this will have, this will be a living, breathing document that will change with time as other things change, um, that implicate the document.
And I would also add, um, call of the chair because there have been some times when we've had projects come in and call of the chair.
Um, Christine, a, a couple of, uh, comments. On the, uh, voting quorum, H, uh, it says failure of a motion to receive a quorum and the vote should result in the board ensuring a denial of appeal. We sometimes do straight denial and sometimes denial without prejudice. I guess this is the question, should that be, should that option be explicitly detailed in the doc-, in this document? And then secondly, in terms of an overarching thing, are do we want a reference to, uh, Robert's Rules of Order or whatever, or some other document in terms of, uh, what, you know, there's a, there's a, um, uh, the order, this order of business is laid out, but in terms of the actual process and procedure, do we want to reference Robert's Rules of Order? So two questions.
Yeah, I noticed, um, Kevin, that you have Robert rules as, um, Section, uh, Twelve and put down, but I do think that makes sense. Um, cause I think Robert's rule should prevail. Um, I also think that in this section, we should talk about full board versus partial board. Um, we should probably talk about refusal here also. Um, and I know that you have under, um, the, is it, yep, under deferrals, uh, right above Section Eight, that last, um, that last paragraph about talking about the administrative deferrals. Um, I think, um, if, if we can tie it into the beginning, the full versus partial board. Okay?
Sure.
Okay.
So you, you want to move it within that paragraph?
Yes. I mean, I'm fine, but I think we should just, because we have, uh, something that explains it in greater detail about administrative deferrals, I do think that in Section Eight, we should talk about, um, you know, not a full board. A full board versus a partial board.
Sure, I can develop that more.
Okay. Yeah, and that's a refusal.
I just, I got a question about deferrals. Why don't, why don't we repost the projects that get deferred? I don't understand why we don't relist them.
Well, the, the logic is that it's already been noticed that we are giving notice at the hearing of the new continued date.
Yeah, but
That being, everything else being the same, unless there's a change to the refusal letter or the project, uh, then we, then the notice is provided at the hearing at the time that the deferral is requested.
Yeah, I, I just think sometimes the deferrals come in, in, in various different ways. Like sometimes it's not always the attorney going up and making the request for deferrals. Sometimes we get them ahead of time and then the burden falls back on like people that we don't have control over to like let the community know that it's been deferred to a different date. Like sometimes they come in, we have a stack before the meeting, like these are deferred to this date because of like a community process thing or something like that. Well, we're now relying on the mayor's Office of Naval Service to let people know where I feel like that burden should still be covered by us. That's my thoughts.
What was more, I mean, what, what is wrong if it's, uh, if it goes out through other venues, if it goes out through ONS, if it goes out through the appellate? Um, is there something, something that, that upsets you about that or concerns you about that?
Well, I just think they're like our hearings that we should be, very, we, like, that the onus eventually, i- in my opinion, falls back on, on us to make sure it gets done. And relying on other people to do that just leaves room for error.
So I mean, I think it's that, you know, we've already, everybody that's entitled to notice should already have received notice at, at the time of the first hearing. Um, and then, so everybody that has had, that is, has an interest in that case, that might want to speak in favor or in opposition to is aware and is, is most likely present at the hearing at the time when the, the deferral would be requested. And then they are being notified, uh, at the hearing that that's, that the case is being deferred to another date. To include, to re-, to re-notice every case would limit the ability in some instances to give a short deferral. If we're deferring to the next hearing or two hearings away, you need at least twenty days to, to, to send out the mailings. So that would eliminate the possibility for having short deferrals if we were going to, uh, re-notice all of those cases, um, upon deferring them. If there is a specific reason that, um, it comes to light that there, that might require, um, a, a re-notice, then we could do that, I think, on a case-by-case basis.
Y- y- yeah, and I guess my thing would be, this would also discourage people from going for deferrals after deferrals when they know like if they defer, they gotta, it's gonna be, you know, they need twenty days' notice to resend out the notices, like.
Well, I think there's two ways of addressing it, Joe. First is now that the meetings are online, people can more clearly see if they cared about the case, what the outcome was. And, you know, I, I appreciate Kevin's comment about a quick, a quick next hearing. Um, and so I think that's, and the, and finally, I think on the deferral section, on, um, under deferral section one, two, three, the fourth paragraph talks about us clearly not, advises the appellant not to request more than two deferrals. I think it's gonna be incumbent on us to stick to that. You know, and it says excessive or meritless requests may be results in the, in the board voting to dismiss the appeal. You know, so I think that might be a good, a, a good way of also addressing it. So it's gonna take, um, a number of different tactics, but I think that might be the way to get to it.
I agree. I think that that is, uh, a, a better way, or at least one optional, uh, opt-, one other option, um, is to limit the number of deferrals, uh, absent good cause. And if, uh, there is excessive deferrals requested, that there'd be a dismissal or dismissal without prejudice of the appeal. Um, and if that becomes a new practice, I think then that you will see the requests for deferrals decline.
The, so, so going back into this deferrals, we hear, we, we talk about good cause as in the very first sentence. And then it looks like the second paragraph tries to define what good cause is. Do we in fact need that?
In the second paragraph?
Yep.
I can take a look at whether or not it's, uh, extraneous or duplicative. Um, I
Okay.
I think there might be some reference to, um, to a continuance within the Enabling Act. So I'll have to refer back to that and see what is, what is in there. And I, I can look at, at editing it, uh, with an eye toward that.
Then I'm thinking that the third paragraph, to respond to Joe's concern, if there is a sentence in there that said, that, that reiterates that the hearings can be found at X, Y, and Z, um, website or wherever, the city's website. Okay?
Yeah, I can put that in there. That's, that's, that's not a problem.
Just a, one, one more thing too is, you know, do we outline anywhere how, like, we'll call for deferrals? Like there's two types of defer-, and in my mind, there's three types of deferrals that happen, right? There's ones that get submitted before we even meet that, like we have that stack, right? And then there's the ones that, um, will call for anybody at nine thirty want a deferral. And then there's ones that come to the table, they start their process, and then in the middle of it, for whatever reason, they decide they need more time and, and a deferral's request, uh, requested. Do we outline those three instances of like instances of like, how we hear, we, how deferrals happen? Do we need to? Just a, just a thought.
I look, I look at one and two as the same thing, because some of us, some people are giving us the courtesy of a heads up, you know? And for the third one, people who are at the table, sometimes it's on us. When they start a process, and he realizes that X, Y, and Z hasn't been done, or they still need more work, and it's for us who make the recommendation for a deferral. It's not necessarily they who are asking for the deferral. It's us who say, you know, you're not quite ready. And so I'm not sure that we need to, maybe there just needs to be a sentence that sometimes the board will just make a motion or, you know, something to reflect the fact that it's not quite ready. Kevin, is that possible?
Yeah, that, yeah, so I think it's within the board's discretion, and I can, I can add something or, or develop it further to, you know, something that comes up, that's elicited within testimony that requires a deferral for, you know, something that the board might identify that needs to be addressed before there can be a vote on the, on the proposal.
The other thing that I would also like to see kind of mentioned in this section is that some of the time, community groups do not meet over the summer or at the holiday time. And we need to make sure that in fact, they are, they understand that our processes will proceed with or without them. You know, so there needs to be some way of saying that, you know, the community is encouraged to get their comments in, otherwise the decision will be made without their advisory comment.
But just out of curiosity, do, are most, are the community organizations meeting virtually these days, or they, have they just rolled up the doors?
Some over here in, in Wood One, some are, some are looking into it, some aren't.
Yeah, I know that ONS is trying to work on, you know, some policies and procedures to get that going, or, you know, some new practices in, you know, the, under the conditions in which we're in currently. But I'm not sure specifically what they're doing to address that, but I know that they are, are working towards some resolution.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, this is not to be reflected in the document, but I just suspect that for the next period of time, six to 12 months, there will be more problems with getting things through the community process than there will be getting through the board. I mean, I think we're, we're on the verge of figuring out how to do our business. But a lot of these projects are not gonna get, gonna have any community process.
Yeah, oh, so yes, I, I think, I think the commissioner just commented that ONS is gonna have virtual meetings. But I don't have, again, I don't have more specific details on, on, on how they are accomplishing that. One thing that we have been doing during this time, during the pandemic, and which I suspect we'll continue to do as we go forward, is to encourage more community members to submit their comments, whether it's in support or in opposition, to submit those comments prior to the hearing in writing, to help facilitate, you know, the, the efficient conduct of the hearings. That's not always gonna be the case, but I think we will continue to encourage that. And that is one thing that we have encouraged, leading up to beginning our virtual hearings next week, is to have those comments submitted so that they can be a part of the record beforehand and referenced during the hearing. And I think that's something that we'll probably can consider continuing once, you know, things have been relaxed.
That means Mark Fortune's going to be busy.
I, no, I'm not saying necessarily that we would, everything would be verbatim read into the record, but, you know, they, they would all be a part of the record, they would be in the file beforehand, and the board has, you know, has the chance to review those before going on the record and get a sense of what the comments are. And I, I think that will be helpful, and, and it might free up some time during the hearings, if, if people do that, choose that option rather than to stand up and, and to speak.
But I think, I, I think it's important that, while maybe not every single word, like, word on every single letter gets read into the record, verbatim, I think it's important for like, it to be, something to be acknowledged into the record for the live stream, that we have six letters in support and four letters in opposition to this project that can be found in the file.
Joe, that's how it was done at the last meeting in the subcommittee.
Okay.
It was basically read into the record that we had eight letters in support, two letters of opposition when Christine asked for opposition. So that's how we did it.
In terms-
And any more comments?
Christine, Christine-
Christine, Mark is, Mark has a comment.
Christine, one, one question.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
Can you hear me? So one, one thing that's come up, obviously, in the board meetings, where we've had projects that are coming in front of us that have numerous people in support, and then we have people on non-support, and you've always said, let me hear from elected officials first, and then people from the community, but we want to hear from five. There may be 15 to 20 people in that room. Do we address that here, or is that, your call as the chairperson?
I think it's in the document, right?
Yeah.
Yes, under the, I mean, it's, it's at Christine's discretion as the chair overseeing the, the hearing. In the interest of, of time, obviously, there are, the dockets are long, and some appeals take longer than others, and it's within Christine's discretion to manage that. So it, and it can vary on a case-by-case basis, but it's at the discretion of the chair.
Right. And I think the only reason why I bring that up is I think a lot of people are upset that people weren't having their voices heard.
Can you please translate what Mark just said? I'm sorry, I'm not quite able to hear on, on audio, Mark.
A lot of people have been concerned that they're not having their voices heard.
They're not having what? Sorry, their voices heard? Yes, you know, and what I'm fine about is reference to open meeting law, which says that it's at the discretion of the, of the board chair, because that's clearly there in the legislation, you know? And I think it's always a balance with us about, you know, how much we can hear, how much is repetitive, you know, and what new information we're really gathering at these, at these hearings.
I agree, I agree.
Is there also a way, is there also a way to have some sort of time period, you get three minutes to speak, instead of having someone go on for 20 minutes and people still waiting in line? Is that something that we could probably adopt? Put a time clock.
And, and I, I got, is there a way that, similar to like, a city council hearing, right, where you gotta like, sign up and to give testimony on whatever thing? Like, can we start doing that? And then when people, if we're at the point where the chair's discretion is, we've exhausted this conversation, we can at least acknowledge, like, and there was eight other people present?
Yes. So, so what we do is that, you know, when there are a lot of people to speak either in support or in opposition, we hear from three or four on either side, and have everybody else put their name and address and their position as a sign, as a sign-up, so that it is in the record and it acknowledges them. Okay? So that's how we take care of that.
Yep, okay. Something that I make sure is reflected in the written decision. When I'm going through the file and, and preparing the written decisions, I look for letters of opposition, letters of support, and I will identify that their existence in, in the decision, that they are part of the file.
Does that go into the minutes?
The minutes, the minutes will also reflect if there are letters of support or opposition or petition submitted at the hearing as well. That is part of the minutes as well.
Okay, excellent. So that's all taken care of. So, under the last paragraph on the deferrals, right above section eight, we should talk about an administrative deferral in there, that very, very last paragraph. We should give it a name. Okay? And then, under the written decision, okay, so, I have two, two thoughts on this written decision. I'll go through the, they're both fairly easy. On the third paragraph, it says after a decision has been approved by the ACC, I would say has been reviewed and approved. I know, I know you review everything, but I think we should just make sure that it's on the record. Okay? And then I think that we should also come up with the types of decisions that the board can come up with. Approve, approve with proviso, deny and deny without prejudice. So that at least here, we can start capturing that a denial, you have to wait a year, denial without prejudice, you know, that's, that's a different standard. Okay?
Yep, I can, I can make those edits as well. That's a good, I think, and I think that makes sense.
And then, under provisos, okay, so, under the provisos, there's one thing that I'm feeling that we should think about in this section, because, so if we look at our provisos, the predominant proviso is to BPDA for design review. Right? And so what I'm trying to figure out is that sometimes, and I think we see this fairly frequently, a project goes to BPDA for design review, and it comes out exactly as it went in. They, there, there is no changes made. And what I need to figure out is how is the board informed of the fact that a staff person at BPDA was required to do design review, and in, in their wisdom decided that none was required? And what is, what is the feedback loop to the board so that we know that, that in fact, it's going to be built exactly as it is? You know, so there needs to be something that, that ensures that the board decision is in fact a board decision, and that we are not at a hearing, you know, and the community at large, and everybody understands that we want something addressed, and it's not addressed, and it looks like we've fallen, we've fallen down on our job.
And that's something that I think would, I'd be happy to look into. I don't think I know-
No, I, I know, it's, it's something for further discussion.
Yeah, but no, that's fine. I mean, I'm glad that you brought it to my attention, and that's something that we can, you know, start to look into, how we might get that feedback and provide it to the board. We'll have to look into that.
Yeah, I, I would want to echo Christine's comments. There's the issue of accountability. We, we pass a motion, and sometimes they're very specific, very specific about the provisos. And on anecdotal basis, I've heard situations where it just gets ignored. And that's really, you know, I, I think that's for the ISD enforcement, but it would be helpful if the, the board were apprised of, of those kind of situations.
Not, not that we are automatic, saying the usual, you know, board takeout language. I think that should be here in an, in an appendix, so that there's sunshine on what our provisos are. Because I think we have, in, in other cases, we have a couple of standard provisos, and I think for everybody, it would be good to have that in the appendix. Okay? And then, let's see, then we have, any, any questions, any comments for this section before we move on to the next? There is, I'm gonna come back to a concept of the litigation exemption, but we can come back to that. Okay, now, the next section is section nine, appeals from the board decisions. Any comments on that? Okay, no comments? Okay, that's good. On the other, section 10, other board functions and procedures, any comment on that? And again, I'd like to relook at this reconsideration piece, because I know it ties back to what we had spoken about earlier. On section C, I'd like to keep it as interpretation, because that's the language we use, we use. This is section 10C.
Right, I think citizens' appeal there as well, though, because this will be a document that's available to the public, and I, I think it might be helpful to members of the community that might be looking to appeal a decision of the board. I, I think, I think interpretation, if it says that alone, would be a little bit more confusing to somebody who's not familiar, familiar with board process.
Okay. And then the last paragraph, I'd like something in there to say that the board may send a, a request to the law department. So, so it reflects the fact that we will, we may have a call of the chair once we get a decision from the, from the law department. And that it should say, I, I'm not sure it should say this here, but it probably should, that the law department will send the attorney-client privilege, privilege document to the board.
I'll make that change as well. I think that's important.
Okay. And then on extensions, on the very last paragraph, again, I'd say at the next available hearing. Okay, and then I think, okay, on board final arbiter, I think that's great. But there's one thing that we have not addressed, and that is, and we've seen it coming through more and more frequently, is that a project goes, for example, through an Article 80 process. And then it comes to us, and it has, let's just say, 10 units approved. Then we have a request to approve, you know, five additional units. You know, and, you know, we have a concern about size, density, and all those kinds of issues. And I think that that needs to be addressed in a different way, that in fact, if something goes through an Article 80, 80 process, and comes to us, and we have a hearing, and again, I go back to the, to the fact that anybody watching us and listening to us needs to know that the decision that's been made at that hearing is 99% final. You know, there's always gonna be some board final arbiter coming back to us, but I want to make sure that these kind of cases are nipped in the bud, or those kind of changes are addressed through whatever the venues are prior to it coming to us. If there's a negotiation on the number of units, it all happens so that when it comes to us, it's fait accompli, and everybody understands that that's fait accompli. Okay, so that's-
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
Because we've had, in my recollection, two projects, big, that were dense, and came, wanted, and requested, and they were both Article 80 projects, where a lot of these issues should have been addressed prior to it coming to the board, so that after it was done with us, it was just a matter of design review or something like that, versus more substantive changes in the number of units and the size of the units, or whatever it is.
So, yes, I mean, that's something- Right. So, yes, I mean, that's something that we might have to look into further from an administrative standpoint on scheduling those requests. But I think ultimately, you know, I mean, the, the procedure for board final arbiter is conceived of something for an approval of changes which are minor, de minimis changes.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
So I just don't know from a, I'm sorry, Christine, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, I don't see these as minor, quote, minor, but I know that we had one of those Article 80 things come in as quote, minor, under board final arbiter, you know, and so that's what I want to, just make sure that we don't set a precedent on it, set a precedent on it.
Yeah. So I'm just, so like I said, from an administrative standpoint, in terms of not scheduling such a request, if there is, if the, if the changes don't trigger any additional zoning violations, I, I'd have, we'd have to discuss what ways, you know, from an administrative standpoint, or adjusting their criteria to prevent such a request from being scheduled. Otherwise, if the request meets with the okay of the plans examiner because it doesn't trigger any additional zoning violations, but in actuality, it is, it differs enough from what was approved in the board's judgment, then the board, I think, would have the discretion to deny the request and require that a new permit be filed, which I think is ultimately what you're getting at in the first place. So in terms of administratively, you know, weeding them out, that's something that, like I said, would have to look into further, but in the event that, that's not a feasible option, the board can vote accordingly in its discretion based upon what is being presented to it and what the changes look like versus what was initially approved by the board.
Okay. Okay, and then, under the subcommittee, I want to make sure, you know, we should go back and see what the original subcommittee requirements are, because, so it's no, so I want to make sure that we, in fact, make this a family-friendly, a neighborhood-friendly proposal, our review process, so that in fact, it is owner-occupied. Because, for example, if it's a conversion from a one to a two by a investor, I think, I think we should keep that under full sunlight in the, in the large board meetings. But if it's, you know, me living in the unit, trying to get an in-law for my, my kid or something like that, you know, maybe that's because I'm living in the building.
So there are a couple of commissioners' bulletins, which I think initially set out the subcommittee criteria, and then a subsequent one, which expanded the criteria to include non-owner-occupied, single, and two-family dwellings. And part of that reasoning is because we, it prevent, it limits the number of appeals that we can schedule for subcommittee, and can take away from the intended effect of the subcommittee, which is to open up the docket for the full board hearings. So those can be appended, again, appendices, those, those commissioners' bulletins, but, you know, we can always still discuss the qualifying criteria for the subcommittee as well.
I think, I think what brings up the point is that we don't necessarily, I don't know if anybody receives the commissioners' bulletins, to know about these, these changes that are made, I would, you know, that these changes, these changes are being made, you know, so we just need to, let's, let's take a re, let's take a relook at this section, okay, and what the triggers are. And then, I think here, again, and, and this is partially for my own clarification, too, is that we should look at what happens when all three members of the board, of the subcommittee vote deny it, and deny a project. Does it go to the full board, or is that the final decision? Okay? Because I, for some reason, I'm, I always get confused about that.
Right, I, so I think that if, if the subcommittee panel determines, for whatever reason, that the, that they would recommend a vote of denial or denial without prejudice, I think that that is a recommendation that can, by vote of the full board, be adopted. If there, if, if there's any question or need for further debate on it, then I think the, the recommendation could be a deferral to the, the full board. And that could be heard at the next hearing of the full board, because everybody that's scheduled for subcommittee is scheduled for the subcommittee hearing and the next scheduled full hearing of the board. So if that's the case, I think the correction could just be to defer it to that hearing, so that it is, that it is heard by the full board.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members about the document? Feeling, feeling somewhat comfortable? There is one last thing that I want to make sure, actually, this, I'm going to find two last things. One of them is, I want to make sure that, that there is something in here that talks about board members being sued. We've always been sued as members of the board. But distressingly enough, one board member was, was sued as an individual, was sued as an individual for a function that was a board-related function, where that person's livelihood was, was, was threatened. So I want to make sure there's something in here or somewhere, you know, the cost of any litigation or something like that will be borne by the city and not in our capacity as board member.
Yeah, you agree.
Sure. I can look for the, the language that, that there exists on that. I'm sure that there's a city ordinance I can include reference to. Ultimately, we wouldn't be able to prevent the filing of a lawsuit in such a manner, but that is something, once we receive the lawsuit, that, once it's referred to the law department, would be dealt with by motion. If somebody is suing a, a board member in their individual capacity for acts taken in their official duty as a board member on board business, that would be the, the basis of a motion to dismiss that portion of the complaint, or to dismiss them as a defendant in their individual capacity. So this could be, I can look for that language to serve as guidance and explanatory language on filing such lawsuits, but ultimately, we wouldn't be able necessarily prevent it. It's something that might have to be dealt with, within the lawsuit itself by motion.
Yeah, what I want to make sure is that the cost of defense isn't borne by the board member. You know, should, because, because, you know, every person who has a license on this board, that license could possibly be threatened in some way, shape, or form, you know, and so we need to make sure that, or, or maybe other ways they could be threatened, that...
Yeah, I'll look for the language. That would say that, you know, for conduct taken pursuant to their, you know, employment as a board member and their official duties, that board members won't be held personally liable, and that the city will, anything that, if there's conduct, generally, what, nobody's looking for monetary damages against the board, it's looking for a decision to be overturned. But I'll look for the language that you're referring to, wherever that might exist, and see how I can incorporate that into the document.
Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah, that, just to pile on, that, that was a slightly outrageous situation. Here was a board member who took a vote, and, on an issue like, like all of us do, and, and, and someone who disagreed with that vote, then went after that board member's occupational license, which was outrageous, because it was not, it was, had nothing to do with his conduct in that, in his professional capacity, it had to do with his conduct as a board member, and yet, he, he had to bear the brunt of the liability. And that, that was, that was wrong, pure and simple.
Yes, like I said, I'll look for whatever language we can be, that I can put in there that would be informative or instructive. Unfortunately, like I said, we can't always prevent how somebody might file a lawsuit or other action based upon something that happened.
No, 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 I, I, I'm not suggesting that there be anything about preventing the filing of lawsuits. That, that's life. People, it's a litigious society to live in. The issue is, if you're doing something in your capacity as a board member, then, as a city, city employee, board member, then the city, the city ought to play a role in, in defending that.
Okay, and then the last thing, Kevin, is I, I'm thinking that this is what we adopt as our procedures and policies, but I do think there's got to be some easy handbook for residents, especially if we're talking about having somebody in an ambassador role, something that that person can tangibly share with people, that, you know, three pages, four pages, booklet format, whatever it is, that clearly kind of maps out the steps for, for an applicant and, and the process. And I know I promised you a booklet that came out, you know, a couple of decades ago. I still have to look for it, and when I do have it, I'll make sure I have it, too. Okay?
I mean, that's, that's something we can look into as well. I mean, I think that's a, you know, a good idea. We'll have to see how we might be able to accomplish that, and can kind of condense what's in the official policies and procedures down into something that can be more readily made available to constituents that call in with certain types of questions.
And, and something that, because I'm sure that this is not going to be translated, but something smaller that can be translated. Okay?
All right.
So, any other questions that anybody else has? So are we meeting on Thursday evening?
No. The next hearing will be a week from today. Tuesday, June 23rd, will be our first virtual hearing, virtual hearing of the board. So that's, that's our next meeting.
Do we, do we need a motion to accept this document with the, all of the revisions that are recommended?
Yet, this, like I said, this is still in draft form, and there are a lot of additions, revisions that we need to look into. So, you know, there's potentially going to be another meeting at which we would adopt, that the board would adopt this, or to have further discussion of it, whatever might be necessary. I think that is how I envision that.
Correct.
So I will, you know, again, begin incorporating all the suggestions made today, as well as some other things that we're going to be looking into for possible inclusion in the document, and then it will be recirculated for further comment, and eventually, there will be a motion and a vote on adopting it at a later date.
And it could be as part of a full board meeting. It doesn't need to be as part of a business meeting.
Certainly. If it's just going to be a vote for adopting it, I think we could probably do it that way. But that's something that we'll look into, I think, when the time comes. But I think certainly that that's a possibility.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from anybody on the board? It's great seeing you after this long hiatus. And so may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
There a second. I'll look in favor.
All right.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, Ed.
My pleasure.
You're welcome, Christine. Thank you, everyone.
Bye.
Robert.